Mr. Clerk, I move to appoint Treasurer Slavens as Chair Pro Tem in the absence of the Supervisor.
Motion on the floor, is there any support?
Support.
All right, any other nominations, any other nominations, any other nominations? All right, seeing none, I'm going to close nominations. All those in favor of appointing Treasurer Diane Slavens as Chairperson Pro Tem for the purposes of this meeting, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign, the ayes have it. Madam Treasurer, it is your meeting.
Okay, well, good evening, everybody. We are going to start with the Pledge of Allegiance.
Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you so much, and if we could have approval or adoption of the agenda.
Madam Supervisor, I might need a little assistance navigating this. However, I move that we approve the agenda as presented with the modifications of removing items C2, 3, item C3, item G3, and taking item G9, which is considered to annual budget approval, and moving that up just above G1, and adding both the minutes from the July 12 board meeting and the July 26 meeting, of which there are copies in the back.
Support.
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, approval of the agenda. Next, and we've approved the minutes with that, so now we're...
Oh, we have to...
Okay, so can I have a motion to approve the minutes?
Who moved?
Support. Favor?
Aye.
Have it. And now we will go to public comments. Are there any public comments that are not on the agenda item only, I'm sorry? Are there any public comments? Are there any public comments?
Is this for what's on this line, you have to give a question here?
Right, correct, yes, yeah, this is for agenda items only. Do we have any, anyone on, online that...
Allow me to check, one moment. We have four attendees, I see nobody with their hand raised currently. So no public comment online.
Okay, no on, okay, then we will move on to payment of the bills.
Madam Chair, I move that we pay the bills.
Support.
Favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it.
Treasurer will be happy.
Okay, and now we're moving into presentation. We have a presentation from the Youth Advisory Council. If you'd like to step up to the podium and give us your name and...
Hi, my name is Soraya, and I am the Vice President of the Youth Advisory Council.
My name is Mann, and I'm a, I'm a board member on the Youth Advisory Council. The Youth Advisory Council has recently started handing out applications for the 2022-23 year. We have created multiple outlets for these applications to be distributed, such as the Cantonfund.org website. Forms have been handed to Jesse Bunjic, and hard copies are also being handed out to the Board of Trustees. Along with that, board members on the Youth Advisory Council have been told to spread the word.
And these applications will be due on September 23, 2022.
The Youth Advisory Council has also started, wrapped up the year with the Youth Needs Assessment. That was what our last meeting was compiled of, setting up that Youth Needs Assessment.
And our next project is a GIS data research with the Grand Valley University. And essentially, in this study, a researcher from this university has put together a software called the Geographic Information System, and is currently running that study to assess the effectiveness of this program. This is hopefully going to help us process the data from our Youth Needs Assessment, and help us make grand decisions and a strategic plan to help our youth. We have, we have also identified nine objectives last year, and we are focusing on networking, assessment, and representation. And we are make, and we are making continued progress on meeting these objectives.
No updates to the DEI board were made in July or August. The Youth Advisory Council will begin working on them on October, but during September, the theme for the DEI board will be back to school. The Youth Advisory Council has also asked the youth at the block center about holidays and events that they feel is less covered throughout their community, and have set aside a room for these events to be represented.
Thank you for your time, and please feel free to ask any questions.
Thank you so much. Are there any board questions or comments? Stephen?
Yeah, thank you so much, great to see you again, thanks for coming out and during your summer. Do you advertise on social media for the Youth Advisory Council?
Yeah, we are planning to use the CLS, and in a couple of days, when we're closer to the beginning of school, we're going to post our application.
Through, through the CLS, like Facebook and Instagram and all that? Okay, all right, cool. And how many members do you have, how many did you lose to graduation, and what's the total number they usually get?
Well, we had 14 members last year, and four of them, I believe, have graduated, and we're looking at about a maximum of 20 members.
Max of 20, okay, well, I hope you get it.
Thank you so much.
One more question?
Yep. Sorry, please continue.
I was just wondering, if you got more applications than you had spots for, would you go about interviewing, or what would you do in that case?
Yes, I believe we are going to interview, and that would be our main way of looking at which applications to accept and reject.
Paul?
I don't have a question, but I do want to let you know how important the work is that you are doing, and we appreciate that. And I also think it would be really cool to see the information that you receive from the block, with that feedback about ways or opportunities, opportunities to engage in other holidays or other celebrations, and that could be very instructive about the entire programming we do at the township. So that'd be super cool to see that back.
We actually have it already, I can share that with you, we did share it with the SCLE agreement, so it's just a matter of getting it to you as well.
Excellent, thank you for doing that work for us.
Thank you so much for your time.
Yeah.
Very, very much, we appreciate the updates.
We invite you all to share the application form live with your networks and your contacts, and if anybody reaches out or has any questions, we obviously want you to have the information to help us to recruit the best of the best.
Okay, wonderful, thank you very, very much. Okay, now we will move on to the consent calendar.
Madam Supervisor, I move that the board approve the consent calendar as amended. With item C1, consider award of a contract to Al's Asphalt Paving Company for asphalt path rehabilitation at Pheasant Run Golf Course, or PRGC, and Heritage Park. Additionally, item C2, consider awarding contract and approved purchase order, Pheasant Run cart corral fence replacement in connection with the capital improvement program. And item C4, consider updating the location on record for previously approved outdoor warning siren repair. C5, consider accepting a traffic safety grant from AAA for the purchase of an InstaAlert 24 message display board, and associated amendment to the 2022 fire budget. Item C6, consider approving the annual licensing renewal of powered DMS. And item C7, consider second reading of an ordinance to amend Chapter 74, Article 2, Division 3, Subsection 3, subsections 74 through 173, building sewers and connections.
Support.
All, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it. We'll move on to G1. I'm sorry, yes, G0, I apologize. Consider Watuwa annual budget approval.
Madam Supervisor, oh, it's a force of habit. Madam Chair.
Yes, thank you.
I move to approve the attached resolution affirming approval of Tua's proposed budget for the fiscal year ending September 30, 2023. Whereas Western Township's Utilities Authority has prepared a proposed budget for the fiscal year ending September 30, 2023, which has been reviewed by the Finance Committee on July 7, 2022, and the Board of Commissioners on July 25, 2022, and whereas the authority is required to submit a budget to each of the member townships for approval in August of each year, now therefore be it resolved that the department budget, the departmental budget for the authority is presented on page one of the proposed annual budget for the fiscal year ending September 30, 2023, and the amount presented is hereby approved.
Support.
Presti Borninski, thank you. According to Section 7.5 of the Western Township Utilities Authority, finance and service agreement with Charter Township of Canton, Northville, and Plymouth, Watuwa shall annually submit a budget to each of, for the, of the townships for its approval in August, in August of each year. Does anybody have any questions? No? Okay.
Not a question, I just thought perhaps we could explain what Watuwa is briefly.
Absolutely, and we have Aaron, would you mind? Thank you.
Sure. Good evening, by the way, it's nice to be here, it's been several years since I've had the opportunity to bore you in person. The Western Township's Utilities Authority is a regional sewer authority, so we do the sewer collection for Northville, Plymouth, and Canton Townships. We don't do any treatment, we contract that out, and the current state of affairs since about 2017 is that we send all of our wastewater to YCUA for treatment. So we collect it, we store as needed in, in wet weather events, and we pump it to YCUA.
Other questions? Yes, Stephen.
Welcome back, it's been a while, good to see you. Can you describe how the economy has impacted the organization in terms of rising costs of, I'm sure, things like building materials and things like that have, the, the rising costs of those have impacted you, and how did that impact the budget?
We were either, I'll say lucky, I guess, with the current fiscal year that is ending September 30th. When we prepared the budget last year, we actually had a decrease, as we do this year. But I did raise the concerns to my board at that time that it was more likely than in a previous year that we would need a budget amendment, just because of the potential for inflation. Fortunately, we have come in under budget, and you'll note with our budget this year, there's a very, very nominal decrease. The, the bulk of that decrease is in wastewater treatment. We do have a minor increase in both the operations and maintenance and administrative line items, which is mostly where you'd see the inflationary impacts. Sewage treatment, obviously, is a potential source of inflation as well. If you look at page three, actually, of the budget, you'll see that the YCUA lookback for 1920 was 1.8 million, and last year was 565,000. We've been working to get that number down, and inflation has had some impact on that, but that is why we have no rate increase to YCUA this year, is the, the combination of the inflationary costs that they see, and also our efforts to decrease that lookback.
Okay, oh, I see, lookback, I see. Can you describe lookback?
Sure, the, one of the great benefits of our agreement with YCUA is our actual annual costs are our prorated share of their costs. So we only, we establish a rate, which you can see on page three of this budget, but at the end of the year, they do a lookback where they calculate their actual costs, the rate is typically based on budgeted costs. So they calculate the actual costs of the treatment plant and the actual share of flows that we contributed, so, and we only pay our share of, of those actual costs. So the past several years, we've gotten a lookback, it's very similar to your tax return if you overpay taxes, you get, it's your money, but you get it back and...
Gotcha. Thank you.
So I did, I did notice the township received notification from YCUA on August 1st that our rates for 2023 would be going up, and I was wondering, do you think that will impact Watuwa's lookback in the future?
I don't, for 2023, we are budgeting and have agreed on a 0% increase for the bulk of the calendar year for 2223 with YCUA. We do budget a 3% increase for the September 23 time period, we have a, a little bit of difficulty in that our fiscal year does not match their fiscal year.
Yeah.
So that's the, the little discrepancy between those two things, but we have agreed on a 0% increase for the upcoming year.
Perfect.
The bulk of the year.
Any other questions? Okay, yes, Tony?
So, you know, thanks for a cup, a few, I think it was last year when we went and visited the facility, so I, I noticed that there was some, some sort of new construction happening there. Is that like, has the inflation or anything impacted that, or no, or is it going as? I, I was just curious about that.
The, the project is actually complete. The only outstanding issue are permits from Wayne County, have yet to be closed out, but the construction itself is complete. I can't tell you the final numbers yet, because it hasn't been closed out, but I expect that we will be several hundred thousand dollars under budget. It was a design-build project, so the contractor gave us a guaranteed maximum price, and so the inflationary impacts were built into that guaranteed maximum price. And I expect we'll get about $300,000 reduction off that previously submitted GMP.
Great news, thank you.
I just, I just want to put it out there that once it's ready for us to come see, I would love to come back and, and see how it has all ended up.
Absolutely, I was, I was out there last week taking a, a walk with our attorney, who wanted to see it, because he usually just sees the bad side of construction, who wanted to see the good side. We're still waiting for some of the greenery to take, take hold, but the construction itself is done, and, and we can have you on.
Thank you. Thank you, yeah, that was a wonderful tour, you had all of the communities go, and we all split up and went, so we appreciate you keeping us in, in the loop and, and educating us on Watuwa, so, thank you very much. And, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Okay, we went to G, G1. Consider site plan for Mini Storage Depot.
Madam Chair, I move that the board approve the tat, the following resolution for the site plan for Mini Storage Depot. Whereas project sponsor has requested site plan approval for a mini warehouse establishment use on the subject tax parcel at 4985 Research Drive, and whereas the Planning Commission reviewed the site plan application and applicable criteria and voted 7-0 to recommend approval with conditions as the request meets the requirements of the zoning ordinance, now therefore be it resolved, the Board of Trustees of the Charter Township of Canton, Michigan does hereby approve the site plan for a mini warehouse establishment use on subject tax parcel at 4985 Research Drive, subject to the execution of the cross-access easement agreement to the satisfaction of Township Legal Counsel, and subject to all state, county, and township requirements.
Any other support? Or... Application proposal to construct a mini warehouse establishment that will consist of three independent buildings on 4985 Research Drive, which is vacant, the subject site is located on the southeast corner of Michigan Ave and Research Drive, between Beck Road and Belleville Road, and is located in the quadrant Industrial Research Park. The subject site is zoned L1, light industrial and mini warehouse establishments are special land uses in the L1 zoning district, subject to Section 6.02M of the zoning ordinance. At its meeting on January 11, 2022, the Canton Township Board of Trustees approved the special land use for the mini warehouse establishment. At its meeting on May 2, 2022, the Planning Commission recommended approval of the site plan, subject to the condition, if the site plan is approved, the next step will be for the applicant to submit plans to the Engineering Services Division and Building Inspection Service Division for review prior to construction. Do we, Jade, do you want to say anything regarding...
No, I have nothing additional to add to what is in the RBA, I do know, if there's anything specific, Patrick Sloan is on the call as well.
Okay, wonderful. Are there any questions? No? Okay, I'll...
We are, it looks like we are going to see a, a mild closure to the sidewalk gap that exists right there on Michigan Avenue, is that correct?
That would be correct.
That is exciting, and Bill Surcheck can knock that off of his list of $50 million of sidewalk that needs to be repaired.
Okay, any other comments or questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it. We'll go on to G2. All right, consider the site plan for automobile wash establishment, the Zippy Auto Wash.
Chair, I move that the board approve the site plan for Zippy Auto Wash, whereas project sponsor has requested site plan approval for an auto wash establishment use on the subject tax parcels located on the southwest corner of the intersection of Michigan Ave and Beck Road, and whereas the Planning Commission reviewed the site plan application and applicable criteria, voted 5-0 to recommend approval with conditions as the request meets the requirements of the zoning ordinance, now therefore be it resolved, Board of Trustees of the Charter Township of Canton, Michigan does hereby approve the site plan for an automobile wash establishment use on parcel, on the subject tax parcels at the southwest corner of Beck Road and Michigan Avenue, subject to all state, county, and township requirements.
Support.
The applicant proposes to construct a car wash establishment on two parcels at the southwest corner of the intersection of Michigan Ave and Beck Road. The site was recently rezoned C3, regional commercial, commercial and automobile wash establishments are special land uses in the C3 zoning district, subject to Section 6.02D of the zoning ordinance. At the meeting on April 26, 2022, the Canton Township Board of Trustees approved the special land use for the car wash establishment. The site currently contains a vacant building, which is proposed to be demolished. The proposed business, Zippy Auto Wash, has four other locations in the Ann Arbor-Seline area. At its meeting on July 11, 2022, the Planning Commission recommended approval of the site plan, subject to conditions. If the site plan is approved, the next step will be for the applicant to submit plans to the Engineering Service Division and Building and Inspection Service Division for review prior to construction. And Jade, do you want to say anything?
No, nothing else to add to this one either.
Any board questions or comments? Stephen?
Yeah, thank you. I don't know if you need Patrick for this, but when I read the Planning Commission minutes, there was something about seven different items that needed to be closed, or something like that, and I was wondering if those are closed now, that it's coming to us, or are there still some of those that are open items?
I can't speak to all seven of them, Patrick might be able to speak to them, I don't know if the petitioner's here, and, so petitioner's here in the audience as well, they may be able to address them.
They mentioned seven, then I saw six listed, and so it was a little confusing to me, yeah.
I don't have, I'm Greg Heim, the engineer responsible for the plans. I have been working with Patrick, and we have addressed all of his concerns that he felt were necessary to come here. I don't have the list in front of me of what those requirements were, but they were minor in nature, and it was just some clarifications on the plans, a lot, some of it to do with landscaping, and another kind.
Okay.
I did just get word from Patrick that they all have been met.
Okay.
They all, okay, thank you.
Shall I allow Patrick to talk?
Please.
Well, he's good, but if you want, you can.
Patrick, use the power you have, judiciously, please. I have a question, I didn't see any sidewalk on the site plan, are we planning on putting any sidewalk at that location?
We are planning to put sidewalk along both frontages of Michigan and Beck, so it's, I think in the description, it's like a thousand foot of sidewalk.
Oh, all right.
Intensive.
Michael, you don't get to become the sidewalk czar until I'm done on this report.
Well, you've got to step it up, this is two site plans without any mention of sidewalk or any type of pedestrian connectivity, Stephen, you are asleep at the wheel.
Are there any other questions or comments?
It says 1,278 feet of sidewalk.
Yeah, well, there's 1,278 pages in this packet, I didn't read it all.
And you read all of them, right?
I just have a quick comment.
Yes.
I, I was reading the Planning Commission minutes, and I, I saw that they have, you know, they are having an electric EV charging station there, and they're also having solar panels on the building, and we really appreciate that, that you are, you know, going into the modern technology and keeping things more sustainable.
The owner is very conscious of energy efficiency throughout the wash, and is happy to provide.
Recycle, water, everything, yeah. Yeah, we appreciate that, it's part of our goal, uh-huh.
I don't have a question, and I will say, I'm planning on voting in favor of this, just because it meets the standards of our zoning ordinance, that said, this development will remove a blighted building in Canton Township, and a dormant kind of vacant parcel, and so I'm pretty excited to see, A, economic development on that corner, which is right next to the Community Financial Credit Union, I would, I'm really excited that it'll be better, because there are some residential to the south, so having connectivity with sidewalks will be huge as well, so I think this will, is a huge improvement to the corner of Michigan Ave and Beck Road, so I'm super excited about it, super excited to see a good economic use there, and definitely the overall community will, the look and feel of community will be better with a brand-new building there, as opposed to a pretty problematic building, so, very, very excited and, and, you know, super excited about the kind of partnership that kind of went into the, the land associated with this, so grateful of that.
All right. Everyone support?
Aye.
I'm trying to, aye.
Aye.
Any nays? Sorry.
It's the most biased, everyone supports it, right?
Any noes? Okay, all in favor, aye. All right, we'll go on to G4. Consider approval for supplemental internet service.
We did not skip G3.
Oh, that's right.
Wait a minute, they hammered me for not knowing about the thousand feet of sidewalk. Madam Chair, I move to approve a three-year contract with Crown Castle Fiber LLC for 1,000... 1,000 MBPS internet service access circuit. The total anticipated cost for this three-year contract is $35,319.
Port.
Snyderman. The township currently obtains internet service from Comcast, is in its third year of a five-year agreement. As the township becomes more reliant on high broadband with internet, best practice recommends that the township have a minimum of two dissimilar vendors' connections to the internet. Should the service from one of the vendors be interrupted, the secondary will continue to provide required critical access to the township's facilities. Aside from providing for redundant internet access, this service will position the ITI Director to potentially negotiate more favorable terms in the future when existing contracts with Comcast expires. Does?
Kate, did you? I, yep. Yeah, Director Bagloo. I was just wondering if they were the same size pipes that we're going to be having, and are we going to be using them in parallel, or is one going to be a backup?
Right now, one is going to be a backup, and they are not the same. Just like every other thing in technology, what you acquired a few years back may have cost you a whole lot more than what you are acquiring today. So the price that we are paying for a gig of service today is way less than we are currently paying for 500 meg that Comcast is giving us. And so ideally, when that Comcast agreement finishes, we should be able to leverage that. And quite frankly, you know, a gig is, you know, it's okay, but we want to look forward to providing upwards of 10 gig service to the township.
Okay, thank you.
Any?
I have a quick question, Victor. So how did you make the decision of, you know, having Crown Castle? I know you, you know, you have worked in the municipalities before, so how, how did you come to the decision that this was our, this is the best option that we have?
So we've really, or rather have engaged a whole bunch of ISPs in our conversation with regards to the broadband service to the entire Canton Township, not just the, not just the building here. And so Crown Castle, number one, they are the underlying carrier for Verizon, and so they are already right here at the tower, right behind us. And so it's relatively easy strategically, they are coming into the building from another direction. So if you're really looking to check all the boxes, particularly as it relates to redundancies, so our current Comcast is coming right in front, and so you have the other one coming right the other way. Should there be an emergency and something happens with the one in front, you, you know, you pick up service from the one the other direction. And also the fact that they are already here, right at the tower, so it made it so easy for us to establish service with them. The other thing to remember is that we are tapping into the GSA contract, which is an existing, it's like you're buying through the existing government-bidet contract, all right? So it, things just lined up that way, and the third fact is that I've used their services before in my previous work, and I can basically vouch for the type of service that they provide.
Thank you so much. I, you know, usually, I think bigger corporations also do this, so like, no, I just wanted our community to be aware why we are using them, and it's, I think it's the ease of access and also having a backup on the other side. That's, that's a very good factor, so thank you.
Welcome.
And just a quick question about logistics. So, you know, if we have an outage using the one system and we have to migrate over to the other system, like what, is there a time lag or limitation for how quickly that happens?
So without me telling you the recipe for cooking that dish.
Forget the question.
But, but yeah, so we, we provide a framework where the system should detect itself, and if there isn't any traffic going the other way, it should revert, revert itself and go the other way. And, you know, this is part of what we call business continuity, and it will continue to provide reliable service to the township. It should also be noted that this is strategic move for us, because as we grow in what we are doing in the township, we just completed the 365 platform migration, we're going to continue to consume a lot more bandwidth, and as we consume a lot more bandwidth, we realize and we've been watching this closely with regards to our current consumption rate of our bandwidth, and it's been, you know, picking up as we turn up, you know, services more and more. So it becomes, it behooves us not to make preparation for, you know, for our growth for the future. You're welcome.
A question, just a comment. Thank you for bringing this to us. You know, we're chiefly a service provider for our community. We provide services to our residents, and if our phone or internet is out, we can't do that as well. So I, I really appreciate this. Thank you.
Welcome.
My ayes?
Aye.
Ayes? Okay, the ayes have it. We'll go on to G5. Consider approval of the phone system upgrade.
Madam Chair, I move to approve the creation of a purchase order to CDW Government for the upgrade to the township's telephone system in an amount not to exceed $62,890, and to approve the attached budget amendment.
Okay.
Port.
Snyderman. The township, the township's current phone system was installed in 2018. The overall system, phones and servers which comprise of the phone system have not been upgraded in subsequent years. In addition to the current version of the system software being end of support by the vendor, there are numerous product enhancement and security patches which need to be applied. ITI is requiring to contract with CDW Government to purchase and install the upgrade of the services. Okay. Victor, did you want to say anything?
The most important thing I want to mention on this one is the security aspect of it. Many times, as we know, you have enhancements to products, but those enhancements are really designed to make the system more secure. So from 2018 that we had this running, I think it has run really well, but, you know, we continue to dodge bullets, knock on wood, that, you know, stuff don't happen. But we don't, ideally, we don't like to wait that long before we do this kind of stuff. We want to make sure that we are constantly up to date with regards to updates. So this is crucial. It's, you know, really needed from yesterday.
Questions or comments? Okay. Can I have support? All ayes?
Aye.
Any ayes? Okay, the ayes have it. We'll go on to six, G6. Consider approval of the SQL Server upgrade.
Chair, I move to create a new purchase order to Dell Computers in an amount not to exceed $42,331.23 from the account number listed to cover the cost of purchasing a new Dell computer, computer server, hardware, and the required Microsoft SQL Database Server software and licensing.
Support? By Trustee Borninski. Numerous township business applications rely on Microsoft SQL Database Server software to operate. The older of the two existing database servers is no longer supported by Microsoft. Additionally, any potential upgrades to existing business applications will require a more recent version of the SQL Server software. ITI is requesting to purchase a database server which will be compatible with the future upgrades to the township business applications. Victor, did you want to say anything on this?
A couple things to keep in mind on this. We have the business application Tyler that we're using, and it's relying on database that, you know, Microsoft SQL Database. And so Tyler had notified us that they would like to upgrade one component of it that deals with the database. And also, the SQL Server also supports our GIS application. And so a couple things that are crucial, and some of you might have noticed, even the GIS today is kind of operating a little bit slow because of these type of requirements that are applicable to the functionality of the system. So we have to make this upgrade so that both Tyler and GIS can get to the versions that they need to get to and continue to provide necessary service to the township.
Do we have any questions or comments? Steven?
Victor, is this not something that a government would contract to put out on the cloud or get support in that way? Is it to, something that needs to be secure and in our building or not practical?
You touched on something that is right in the middle of the strategic direction of the ITI Department. And I take a step back. So the Tyler application, as we know, is part of our central ERP system, and if you, if you know, for the past few months, we've engaged in serious conversations about the right ERP solution for, for the township. Because Tyler itself, we have probably like a year or a year and a half or so with our agreement. But the implementation of a new ERP system is a process that may take you a year and a half to two years. We've started the conversation, all right, before we can get to a year and a year and a half time down the road. Between now and a year and a half, we have to leave, and leaving on what we call as-is, this is part of living on as-is, so that we can be productive. It doesn't negate us from taking that step towards the cloud, all right? But we can't, we're not ready to jump to the cloud because there are several steps that need to happen before we can get to where we need to be. So it's a temporary measure, but it's very necessary. I wish we can flip this switch right away so I don't have to spend this money right now, but we're not really ready to, you know, flip that switch. There's a lot that needs to happen, and we are currently engaged in that.
Great, thank you.
So I don't have a question. I just want to say, especially listening to that, and I luckily get to hear Victor talk inside the building as well, so, but knowing the intentionality and the deliberateness that we are moving forward and migrating to technology that will drastically improve how people interact with the township, it just, it feels good, and it's good to know that we are, we're doing it in, as I said before, in a very deliberate and intentional way. And, yeah, so we really appreciate the leadership that you have brought, Victor, throughout this process, especially the ERP process.
Thank you.
Support?
Aye.
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 Have it. We'll go on to G7. Consider new appointment and reappointment to zoning Board of Appeals.
Madam Super, I'm going to do this in the, in two motions. Madam Chair, I move to the Canton Board of Trustees appoint Mark Quimby to the Zoning Board of Appeals for a three-year term to expire on 8/31/25.
Port.
Supported by Trustee Foster. The resignation of Vicky Welkby has created a vacancy on the Zoning Board of Appeals. Ms. Welkby's term expires on August 31, 2022. The supervisor is recommending Mark Quimby to fill this vacancy. Clarence Lee was appointed to the Zoning Board of Appeals on January 25, 2022. He was appointed to fulfill the rest of James Cesleck's term, which expired on August 31, 2022, and now it is requested that he be appointed for the full three-year term. Who was, Kate, were you on the interview board? Steven and you, okay.
This was a while ago, right?
Yeah, we interviewed him months ago. I think, and there was only one opening, I think it was for planning or something, and then we said once there was an opening on zoning, we would put him on zoning, so now we have an opening and.
We have a lot of good people in the pipeline, I think, at this point, that some, some boards may not have interviews for a little while because there were just so many great people with so many great skill sets. And I know, I think it said here, or I think Amy Houston told us that Mr. Lee was only on for seven months, so I think it's appropriate to give him a full term now.
Do I have support for Mark Quimby?
Aye.
Aye.
Have it.
One quick clarification, it was for Mark and Clarence?
I made the motion for Mark.
Oh, you made, oh, okay. You did separate, okay.
Madam Chair, I move that the Canton Board of Trustees reappoint Clarence Lee to the Zoning Board of Appeals for a three-year term to expire on 8/31/25.
Support? Supported by Trustee Foster. Do I have support?
Aye.
Any ayes? The ayes have it. We will go on to G8. Consider approving an agreement for consulting services between Canton Township and Treatment Intervention Services LLC with an associated amendment to the 2022 police budget.
Madam Chair, I move to approve the agreement for consulting services between Canton Township and Treatment Intervention Services LLC and the associated amendment to the 2022 police budget.
Support? Borninski. The Police Department is requesting approval for 11 months of consulting services with Treatment Intervention Services LLC in the amount of $30,000 to be paid in monthly increments of $2,500. An amendment to the 2022 police budget is also included with this request. Chad, do you have any, anything you want to say?
Yeah, real quick, in the executive summary, it should be 27,500. We wrote this when we thought it was going to be 12 months.
Okay, 20, yeah, I was wondering.
7,500, thank you, Kate. But we, in the resolution, it addresses that, where we decrease 2,500 to 12,500. Just a little bit on this, you know, we're really, you know, the endeavor here is part of the township goals of how we address people with crisis and trauma, and bringing in, you know, this vendor, this contracted services is bringing in someone with over 50 years' experience that can help us model what we hope to be the best programming around people facing crisis and trauma in the township. So he'll be able to train some, a collection of officers to go out to acquire some data. Besides the data, we are requiring through our social work programming and our peer support programming and some of our other programming within the Police Department to help bring this thing to be more holistic in our approach, so appreciate it.
Comments somewhere?
Just a comment. I think this is a really great program, so I'm glad that we are doing it, and so thank you for bringing it to the board.
I, I have known Dalia Gala for quite some time, and he was a pillar in the Plymouth community. He's currently president of the Plymouth Rotary, but he was also instrumental in creating and developing and running one of the most influential nonprofits in the, in the realm of trauma, substance abuse, and mental health, and so I'm excited to see him coming to work. But I'm also really excited, and I think we need to kind of, I, I support this.
But I'm also really excited and I think we need to kind of, I, I support this. And I support this because I think we need to really acknowledge the forward thinking that we're seeing from a public safety standpoint. It was revol, it was, I mean, we were semi-revolutionary in bringing in the social workers because that is not something a lot of departments are open to. And, and that was really important and that, we are doing really good work there. But someone has once, I, I once heard someone say, you, you can't teach what you don't know and you can't lead where you won't go. And I think this digs deeper. This is about the peer support. This is about ensuring that, you know, we're not just responding to the issues in the community from like a triage standpoint, but we're actually looking at being trauma-informed and we're, and we're training officers. And I don't know anybody who is doing that anywhere. And so that in and of itself is, is purely revolutionary. That is not a borrowed concept. That is not something that we are mimicking, that is not a best practice yet, but I believe it will be. So this is great. I'm very impressed and I'm very happy. You make me proud to be on the Board of Trustees for Canton Township.
Okay, thank you.
Opportunity.
Um, not much to say. Michael said it better than I could and Summer also, so I just want to say that I agree totally with what they said.
Do I hear a support?
Aye.
Okay. The ayes have it. All right, now we are at the end of our general calendar and we will go into public comment. Do we have any public comment? Yes, please.
I have three separate questions. I'll make them quick. I know everybody's probably had a long day. First one, well, all three of them are the safety and cleanliness of Canton Township. The first one is probably towards the DPW director. I've called several times in regards to buying a new street sweeper. The one guy used to do it all the time. I've lived in Canton over 20 years. I haven't, they told me it's broke down, blah, 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 but with all the tax dollars coming in, I know Wayne County's supposed to do it, but we know how wonderful Wayne County is. I don't know why they haven't bought one yet. The guy used to do all the streets, they look great, they look crappy now. Wayne County, again, is supposed to do them twice a year, but I haven't seen them out in years, so I don't know if you guys can, if this is already on the board, do? Has anybody thought of this or? Any comments or?
Yeah, you know, we, we really don't comment on this right now. We will take your concerns.
Oh, okay.
And then get back to you, but we do appreciate hearing.
Okay, yeah. And the women at DPW, they did a great job. They used to, I see them daily. I haven't seen them in years, but, um, the thing was 10 years old, it needs to be replaced, but, um, and then the other two issues are, uh, that it's, uh, it's not just in Canton Township, it's every state, every city, every county, everywhere, every neighborhood, speeding. I was just doing some research. The city of Detroit just installed over 7,000 speed humps in residential areas, schools, high-traffic residential areas. Now, if the city of Detroit can do it, I mean, with the tax millage that I'm getting taxed for for the roads to keep them rebuilt, we can use some of that money to keep them safe, install some speed humps near, you know, residential areas, schools, things of that nature. So I'd like to see this board or township consider that. And then the final one is, um, in regards to traffic control, I've called several times. I live on Hanford. You know, it's amazing the stupidity of people when they get behind the wheel of a car. We all know it, we've all seen it. But where I retired from in Durborn Heights, it's been a while, seven, eight years now. I was a captain over there and, uh, the guys used to come in on four, eight-hour shifts and strictly write tickets. It would really slow people down and wake them up to reality, especially in residential areas. So I don't know, I've talked to several officers, I don't know if that's a union issue. They say they just write tickets when they can, they're so busy. So I don't know if that's going to be another program the police can implement. So those three concerns, it's, it's all for the safety and cleanliness of the township. So if you guys can consider that, I appreciate your time and, uh, I guess I'll come back next month for the next meeting to see, or do I need to call anybody or, you know what I mean?
If you want to give your name and, and number, we can have somebody get back.
Okay, yeah, I've called several times and, you know, I always get to run around, no big deal and so, but I'd like to see those three issues implemented here in this township and to keep it safe and healthy and clean for everybody. Thank you so much for your time.
Thank you, thank you. Do we have any other public comments? Any other public comments? Any other public comments? Do we have any online public comments?
We currently have online Patrick Sloan and Cheryl Hassel. Both of them Canton residents, both of them Canton Township employees. I don't see anybody with their hand raised.
All right.
Fifty other people watch it, just watching in?
Yes, thousands of people watching. Eagerly for the hot debate.
Do we have any comments from any of our directors? Yep, okay, all right. How about board members?
I, I'll just say, this is the week after the primary election. We had really good turnout. It was 25.66% voter turnout, which is pretty good for an August gubernatorial primary. It's not as exciting as the 2018 primary where we saw 45% turnout, but I don't think we'll ever see that again because the Rhodes Millage that was mentioned earlier was on the ballot and also there were a lot of competitive races. But people showed up, roughly 69% of folks voted an absentee ballot, so that is still in vogue these days. People are liking to exercise choice in how they vote. But yeah, we had a couple hundred precinct inspectors, poll workers administer the election, your, your neighbors, helping you vote, and a lot of input and a lot of support from, from township departments. And the clerk's office is grateful for the support we receive from the community and from the township staff because it really is your election. And you own it and you do an amazing job running it and we just help facilitate it. So we're grateful for that and the results for that election are on the, the website.
Very good job, great job, Clerk Segrist and to your office and all of the volunteers that helped out with the election because it is a heavy lift, so good job. Any other?
I'll just add to that. I was just wondering how the new precincts worked out and was there much confusion or?
There was.
There was, yeah, people, people don't read their cards and that they get, so.
I would say we have a lot of work to do before November.
Okay.
And I often use the analogy of thinking about broccoli. Whenever I get too concerned about something that I really, really am into, but nobody else cares about, I always say, people think about elections as much as they think about broccoli. And it's true. I think about elections every single day, all day. And I'm like, how could you be so confused? We have 17 ways you could find your location and we mailed you a card and we've been putting it in the focus for the last four months. But we all live very, very, very busy lives and we are going to have to be very creative in the next couple of months to figure out how to help direct people to their correct location. And there's some simple, easy, low-hanging fruit too, like how to direct people when they get to their new locations, how to get there and how to staff accordingly to make sure we can help facilitate that. So we were lucky, only about 6,000 people voted in person on Election Day, right? So that's pretty low. That number will be substantially higher in November. And luckily, those 6,000 people know where to vote, so we just have to help get in touch with all of the people who don't know where to vote and who will be showing up and who don't vote an absentee ballot. So, yeah.
All right.
Lots of work to do.
Good to get, cut our teeth on a primary, so.
It's, that's, it's always, yeah, really good. I always like to, if I'm going to change boundaries, I like to do it well before the presidential primary, or presidential election because it allows voters multiple times to practice voting successfully if they choose to vote in person.
Thanks.
Any other comments from the board? All right, can I have a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Support? All in favor?
Aye.
Nice job.
The ayes have it.
Well done.